Is somebody going to sit in there through every one of our phone bills and say, "Oh, that's personal talk"? Well, it's the same thing now. No, they don't. That's just hitting fifteen dollars. It made that easy. But one of the things you said is, are there people who aren't paying it and should be? That's the same. They may be mandatory that every employee make the fifteen dollars.
Well, I have two phone bills worth of money for two dollars. I have two phones for a reason. I have to separate my phone bill for life and my revenue. I have two Facebook accounts for a reason, Town Manager and Dax. I have two different email accounts for a reason.
How many cell phones are we talking about? Is this, as we're disputing whether or not we do chief manager? Vote, chief manager.
Yes.
Okay, chief wizard, what do you think? Apply to the board?
I'll answer.
If we said that...
You're playing my cell phone.
Yes, I would.
It would.
Do we have police officers and firefighters making fifteen right now?
Yes.
And is there not a security issue for them in particular?
A security issue?
Yeah. I mean, we've talked a lot about how police data needs to be separated, that there's, you know...
No, not cellphone data. They don't have the ability to, like, receive IDAX information or things like that on their cellphone. Our office uses main name for contacting investigators with the town seen, non-pro prosecutor, maybe notifications, call notifications. There are certain places with that type of area of radio, everyone's spotty, you know, sometimes required them to be realizing the cellphone service.
So they're not using the phones for any kind of security that's on the laptops that are individuals?
Correct.
How many cell phones have we got in the town?
Way too many. A lot. What was it? Fifteen? It's in my office somewhere. We just went through it. We inventoried them. A lot.
Because we have all the year firsts.
Yeah.
Mines.
Right.
Well, just listening to say on the town side. I see. I'll be honest. I think I had that benefit, meaning if we use like...
But I think we're running into a lot, I think we're running into a lot of problems in today's world with people keeping her separate from person. And it's hard if you don't have that clear separation, you know? This is personal. This is town. But it's not about the fifteen dollar. This is not, it's not a critical item. I was just concerned, not that anybody here is doing this or is putting us in jeopardy, but if we're going to do cell phones, can I, I'd like to pay to use my Microsoft Surface tablet for personal use as well. I'd love to. I don't want to have to go buy another tablet for my personal use. If I could, I'd love to use my computer in there for personal use as well, if I could, if you don't mind. Now, we allow for vehicles to be used to commute. So, yes, that is allowed, but a vehicle's not going to put us into any necessarily security jeopardy unless somebody drives 100 miles an hour or drives drunk, or obviously that's an issue. So it could as well. This is, this is just something that we've talked about, we struggled with. Everybody knows, and they'll see me walking around, we're at lunch, and I'll set this phone down, I'll set the tablet phone down. And everybody there doesn't watch when he says, "You're a public official, aren't you?" And I'll say, "He's absolutely correct."
I know you yourself always kept himself.
I do not do private business on any of my public devices. I do not do this. Strictly adhere to the rule.
So I'm not a secure leader? Yes. You know, it's my leadership saying this is the way you should do it.
It's a leadership call. If we want the, if the police officers and the firefighters and the utility people are separate, then we can just say that this for now is a town admin rule in there because the utility has a different employee handbook and sort of the other two. We can just make this change on the town side for now. I know you worked hard on it. Employee, employee name's very good. Hers is very good.
Well, what about the enforcement, Dax? What about that question? That we make this rule because they can't use it anymore?
Well, when I'm done stacking chairs to maintain for the events, it's going to be here tomorrow, I'll start enforcing some of this stuff. I'm just saying, if we're going to enforce that every month, I don't know who's going to do that.
Right. I mean, that's the point, but then why have a rule if you're not going to...
I wish, then why do you make people pay fifteen? Why make people pay fifteen dollars to fifteen dollars? Is that just so that the private stuff is private?
It's, no, it's not. That's, that's the, and we've talked about this a little bit, but it completely, it's much easier to say, this is your town phone and your business phone, this is your personal phone. But what you have are generally restrictions on using town equipment, town facilities for your own personal use. They have other policies that restrict you from doing that. And the reason why the fifteen dollars was implemented was to address that. Generally, the state work counts as okay with allowing people to use it as long as we set up some kind of a payment process so that they were paying for their personal use of the town, the town equipment, basically. And that's how we came up with the fifteen dollars. I mean, that's, that's been five or six years ago, probably, with the town administration at the time. But that's why the policy was written, how it was, to allow people to use it because it was happening and we needed to have them pay for it. And I think what Dax, in his mind, wants to do is go back to a clear, this is for town business only. This is, if you wanted to make a personal call, you'll do it with your own personal phone.
How does this apply to not being able to use town equipment or units for state government equipment for electioneering and stuff like that? And we, and I, I put this out, this is an election year. Using town equipment for making phones and stuff, we're saying, well, you paid the fifteen dollars and then you're paying the personal call. It's a gray area.
It is. It is, it is a gray area. I would, I mean, you know, that's part of why, not specifically that issue, but that's part of why you say you're paying the fifteen dollars so you can argue it's personal use when you, the issue ran into is, was it on town time? Was it from an email that, one email that went through a town server? I mean, you know, it's, it's a gray area, but whoever...
I mean, I have two phones. I have two phones. It's not, I guess...
It's a little different for a public official versus someone who works at a private company who gets a phone as a benefit, as in addition to, or as, you know, who gets personal use of public equipment as a benefit. I can, I can see a distinction of the publicly paid for devices and the other.
Certainly not trying to punish employees. Not trying to do that. Making them go get their own cellphone, which is expensive. They're crazy expensive right now. I can understand that. This is just something that, we've been wrestling with this for a couple of years, something here, and finally wanted to do and discuss it. It's not critical, it doesn't have to be passed on a second read tonight, this country, implemented this year. Certainly something you need to think about with town issued electronic devices.
If we, if we do do it, whether it's night or later, I would say we should give a period of time before it's enforced or it's implemented so that if people are, you know, have a different plan, made fifteen bucks, and let's say, based on the fact that they have that, they've eliminated their landline, and then all of a sudden they have no other phone, it's going to, would have been a financial bind to have to get a phone right away. So if we could just give it some kind of plan, I guess is what I'm saying.
And Dax actually asked me to make it effective, meaning where one, when he asked me to do this originally, I forgot to do that. But in, in, part of the reason we did it last night, too, was the issue of enforcing it. It was much easier just to ask everybody to pay fifteen dollars and then you don't have to worry about whether or not they're doing it. But if you look, when I wrote this particular one, I don't say, it doesn't say you may not, it says it shouldn't be used for it. And I try to soften the language because I expect that somebody with a town cellphone would follow their spouse in emergency or something, you know, and it's going to happen. And it kind of put it on the notice of the employee. But it gets a little looser language, maybe than an absolute prohibition like we have in some of our other policies.
So we're going to go through.
Can we, for the next meeting, can you tell us how many employees are actually legalizing for fifteen dollars? How many of the fifty-four cell phones, say, all of the police, all of the fire, I mean, how many are in the town?
Which departments?
I mean, what are the data plans associated with this? I mean, I'll be running through...
We're unlimited.
Unlimited.
We're unlimited.
Unlimited.
Yeah.
And I mean, a question, will we, do we need to be? If people are not, if people are not using it for town business, or do all of the...
Do we need to be unlimited? I would say absolutely yes.
Because of the group plan, the other...
I only had a thousand conversations with my cellphone today.
Yeah. Well, obviously for you, but I'm saying for all the people who have...
Yeah, I would say, I would say unlimited is not killing us. This isn't, this is not a, like I said, it's not a critical item. It's just something that it, it's, we're not getting, we have your taxpayer or something. I know it's, I know it's not really the real analogy to use in our working here, we want to treat our employees well. But those cell phones are being paid for by taxpayer money, and fifteen dollars isn't anywhere near what they cost for one. It's a lot more for a month. So basically, I'm having an advantage over the people that I'm working for because I don't have to go around and pay the forty for the phone, the forty for the data plan, plus the data fee for 130 dollars a month is, is a typical single cellphone bill. So I'm being subsidized at 115 dollars. That's a lot to use it as a personal phone. It's a lot. All right. We can come back to this next month, since we've battled for a free. And moving on, letter F, resolution 2015 dash 28. The redevelopment commission has considered this resolution and passed it unanimously. It was three zero, two members are present. And it is a major request from a company that currently is in that. I'll ask Tom Dickey to come up now. You all know Tom, I think most of you, most of you know Tom. Although he continues to waste away, so help him, he's a little bit. And he'll tell you a little bit about the company. I think it's a great land for the town, especially where it's going to be built, so have a have it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dax. Good evening, we're Tasslers, Tom Dickey, with the Hagan Group. In actual reference, for a company you may not know, I'm a previously doing realty, responsible for development, being some, so I've been around, seen several people before. We're glad to be back here. In my new role at Hagan Group, focusing on investing in local real estate. The Hagan Group is a local family and business. They grew up in agriculture and have various lines of businesses, and they invest not only in real estate, but they invest in a company called RPM Machinery, which is a Case International Harvester dealership. Troy Price is the president, is here today as well as Craig Goode of the company. We're going to break into this quick, but it's been a long vacuum. And as soon as we get through this quickly, if we have any questions, we'll be able to address this. This is the site. This is much improved over the already seen presentations. We have a location map, which is very beginning, is very helpful, we have a location map. So this is the site on very north end of the West Town Crossing front end, this is north of 267. And so what's not shown is that little triangle piece will be a detention pond, and then the site will be sound and see that on the next slide. So I can continue on, so just, yeah, so just, just sound, so just sound that the business pond will be the site of the running. And I'm going to let Troy come up and tell you, just put it on the RPM Machinery business. And then I think Dax, for the slides coming in, we should, photos, we can get the job creation and the investment projects. Troy, just sort of introduce RPM Machinery.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. RPM Machinery consists of a equipment business. We primarily represent Case IH agricultural line in Grand Rapids, along with the Case Construction line. We have four stores here in Indiana, represent the Case Construction product lines as well. So between the five stores, we, this is a rendering of a new building, we build the Grand Rapids, we'll be opening a new facility up there, so we went through this process before. We prefer to get ourselves strategically located so we're visible from interstate, but more importantly, accessibility in the major thoroughfares where it's our RPM, because they are moving large construction equipment. We also have rental equipment to provide, so the rental equipment is something that is a little bit more faster moving. So anyway, we've chosen this corridor because also approximately to the parts that post, Case and Case IH, they're largest parts that go to North America, it's based in Latin Indiana. So it's just up the road off, just off of Interstate 65. So this actually improves our efficiency because we can access, not only customers can access our facilities, but also we can access the Indiana Denver. But again, this is primarily parts, service, and new and used equipment distribution.
Can this be a slide summarizing the major requests, Dax, for you? Yeah, that does, I stopped that just a second. So one more slide. Yeah, let's ask him, he's all good. So here's some photos of, of the shop and Case IH up here. So it's a 4.35 acre parcel land that, not quite, not, we're really close to under contract, you know, and it's 17,500 square foot of building, approximate investment is $3 million. Nineteen employees to Boone County, the average wage is approximately $23. Six of those are salary positions, one semi-skill, those are, those are candidates that are in your application. The effect here will fall less than $1 million. And we'll see, if we go back, try to find this site, I'm taking a third slide. The building is built for expansion. Should we go down there? Okay, so we don't have the pointer, but if you, you see the, 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 the pond, and then as you go south, you see a vertical building. If you look at my, look at my hand here, it's going this way. Then you see bay, you see dotted lines dividing that building. And that, that can be expanded to the southwest, so the building is built for expansion and the business runs there. And so our request, and I am going to give it to you, Dax, and appreciate your assistance, the request is for a 10-year make with a typical schedule. I ran the numbers, submitted yesterday to access office. So over the 10-year phase of taxes, RPM paid tax account, fair to 76,000 dollars, they paid the value of 376,000 dollars. RPM's, things like the Ford, they're competitive for a process that let RPM to select the site, and it's first choice in Detroit, they all knows. This, this current location is in Marion County, and one of the options is to continue to be there, places up next, fall.
Actually, June 2017.
June 2017, we're going to actually build a new building at the end of next year. So one option would be to stay there, but also look at our sites in Marion County, you go up interstate. But the location, the West Town Crossing, optionally caught our attention because, because the brand, relatively branded project, you go forth, there's nothing infrastructure there, they've got a good price in there, and having the steel distributorship just up the street is very positive in the project. So as our request, Troy, I'm going to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
How long, how long have they been in here in Indy?
The facility, I have to, where is that right now? It's been in place for about 14 years, something like that.
Was it a brandy building when you moved in?
Yeah, it was a brandy building that was built in the American Express complex, it was just south of the airport. Not a bad facility, but a poor location, we were trying to call, finding, hard to pin it out, the facility, we came in.
Is that, and then also, you made it, you first bought it, and then...
You know, I can't answer that question because we bought the company from a previous owner, and I don't know anything about making something in there.
Oh, you, and you may have already said this, Tom, I might not have heard. Are their plans for possibly expanding in the future, or is this piece of land got that ability for you to expand in the future?
Yeah, it's more, it's more important that the ability is made in service areas. That's why as long as we're starting this shop, it's set up so that maybe we add it on to a neighborhood. Because as you bring the part of the business, it goes to required for space and for service space, and the asset's designed for that.
And you have to come here and say, "Hey, you're a place..."
And position on the property as well.
Tom, you're going to have to, I'm, I'm not old yet for so much, but 65, you're actually going to...
Yeah, I'm...
Give me a name, give me something, give me your records.
The water tower, plenty of houses, whole office in the water.
Show me the, the water towers to the south side, right?
Gloves, the water towers, it's lower on the outside of the, gloves. Did you see where, where it's marked Indianapolis Road, we're over just the little park, E R, and that's the harvest rig ring where the new road is, just across the road is where the new White Stone Water Tower, or the Water Tower is. So does that make sense? Does that help?
It's just basically immediately north of the water tower.
Yes, yes.
So you're going in the section where there is actually a little...
Yeah, it's not, yes, it is, no, it is the counter to the, the, the...
It's almost in front of that area. Yeah, right, there's some red bars.
This, this is a dickstore on White Stone Cross. North of 267.
And 400, this is, this is going to make you a big range. 400, that's scary territory, right? Sorry, I'm just so trying to get my bearings, I am totally lost, and I drive that like three times a week. Okay.
Do you know where the triple X billboard is?
Yeah.
It's, it's billboard, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And right now, the property is more built with two billboards.
Got it. That helps. Thank you. Is the new design, it's designed on the Indianapolis Road to my, to factor large trucks? It's not the needless little curb then?
It, it's not the simple curb, but the roadway's actually white enough that the trucks can make the turn. I've driven it several times just to make sure they're not coming through, and the infrastructure that's there is only hard.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's kind of an odd little zig in the, things to turn on.
I would make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2015-28, a resolution of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, declaring an economic revitalization area for real property tax payment, RPM machinery, number six.
Second. All who favor, say aye. All who oppose, say no. Resolution denied.
Thank you.
Well, the Whitestown...
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Resolution 2015 dash 29. It's only you, sir. I'm drunk. Okay. Resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, encouraging the Boone County Health Department to expand its HIV and hepatitis C screening program. Whereas some public safety officials have recently stated that Boone County is in the midst of a opioid, heroin epidemic, and whereas HIV and hepatitis C screening have substantial net benefits to individuals and the public health, and whereas early diagnosis and treatment for HIV can prolong life, reduce transmission, and is a cost-effective public health intervention, and whereas heroin use increases the risk of being exposed to HIV and viral hepatitis through contact with infected blood or body fluids that results from the sharing of syringes and injection paraphernalia. And whereas the Whitestown Town Council desires to encourage the Boone County Health Department to expand its HIV and hepatitis C screening program as part of the Health Department's continuing effort in providing for the well-being of the Boone County community. Now therefore, be it resolved at the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, hereby encourages the Boone County Health Department to increase the opportunity for the public to obtain HIV and hepatitis C testing by number one, expanding the dates and available time slots when individuals may walk in for HIV and hepatitis C testing; number two, providing walk-in periods for HIV and hepatitis C testing at times that are most convenient to individuals, like we use the services; and three, considering offering HIV and hepatitis C testing at other locations around the county for those individuals that may need the testing services but may not have reliable transportation. Passed by the Whitestown, Indiana Town Council this 30th day of October 2015.
I would make a motion, we adopt a town extension of Indiana Resolution Number 2015 dash 29, a resolution of the town council of Whitestown, Indiana, urging Boone County Health Department to expand its HIV and hepatitis C screening program.
I'll second. Yes.
Sorry, this is, this is all true, and testing is right. I, do you know anything about what resources that the Health Department has to do the testing or expand testing?
Well, they should certainly come together with the Boone County Commissioners, Boone County Council, and those are people that have the funding for the guns. I mean, we don't, we don't provide the funding for those departments, certainly.
I realize that, and then I just want to know more of the position that they're in. I'm not saying I'm not kind of support the...
Well, I think regardless of the position, we're in, this needs to occur, so I'm not sure I understand.
Do you know where they provide you with treatment once they're screened?
I don't know the answer to that, but this is still an important part of a, regardless...
Absolutely.
All who favor, say aye. All who oppose, say no. Resolution denied. Next up, consideration of why not still do human relations. I suggest we table this till, remember? I have a couple of different names, there's more resumes coming in, so they contacted me today, and we give everybody an opportunity, it's a new commission. They'll only have to convince until January, if you don't want it to, January 1st, to get, ideal time to, to get it going, so if we can, all of this is a member decision.
I would make a motion that we table this from November, or until...
Second. All right. All who favor, say aye. All who oppose, say no. Motion denied. Moving on to the final.
Always contentious.
The approval of the House.
Always, always forty-five minute discussion about trick or treat dollars.
Although people already have an expectation, because I think you put that into my hours on.
I know, and those are last year's hours, so I just have to, I can sit last year's hour.
I would make a motion to be approved, 2015, Charlie, trick or treat dollars, from six to nine, and seven.
Hold on, I've got some questions.
Excellent. Motion has been seconded, and I'm waiting, I'm waiting your turn.
We got a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Okay. First, isn't this an expansion as far as, was it eight thirty last year?
Jeff, last year you grew 69, it's on the agenda.
Sixty-nine, I couldn't figure that, that's all.
And I think you answered the same question last year.
The police chief is gone. I assume Josh, you will have your five folks out, give trick or treat out again this year?
It is Monday.
Okay, and I assume most people have any controls during the hours.
He's done it every year, so I'll get sent to him.
Nothing has changed.
Oh, amazing.
We live in a, in a...
There will also be, because of, I don't know what's still...
Um, there will also be, uh, because I don't know what's still this under, but the five K, uh, which everybody is very excited about is now a Halloween five K. Costume, uh, kind of costume party. And there'll be, uh, candy here at this facility associated with that event as well. So I plan on winning my age group.
Justin.
Justin.
All, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. All right. The hours are up.
I have a question. Can we add an I to the agenda? I'd like to discuss for instance, some current concerns that were brought up regarding some donations and then how does he.
Yes, but can I, can I add on to that motion?
Absolutely.
I think another thing we should at least discuss, and we don't want to do it, is adding election day as a holiday in the handbook with the election being held there. We can.
We can do it together, that's fine.
We can just.
We'll do yours first, it's easier.
Okay.
So you wanna add a K and an L? Yeah.
Yes.
So move. K and an election day.
Yes.
I sent you all an email about election day and general election day will now be, our facility was never, uh, a polling station. I don't know how it goes to be in any way. And now this is, the county gloves this facility and it's just, I think it's in the best interest of all that especially on general election day, they want it in the building. I'm not trying to get another day off.
I can, I can. I was putting on a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm trying to do, uh, council person somewhere, I should start to do this whole thing.
So you haven't moved, don't I?
All right, so I'll second, I'll second the motion, I don't think anybody did. So all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. There we go. Continue on.
All right. I'm very soon to be.
My only request, question is you're giving all town officials off, typically when it's a holiday and you have to increase the, for, um, payments to the firefighters and police officers for covering on what we consider a holiday.
That is correct.
And then you also have people in utility offices that aren't affected by the fact that this office is closed.
That is true.
So how are we handling increased pay that is not in the budgets for an additional holiday for not only firefighters, police officers and utility workers who still have to come in and still do testing?
I understand, so if what we wanna do is just close town administration, that's fine.
I don't know that that's necessarily, why can't, would you, during election day, they use this room?
We could, uh, generally school, a school that is, sometimes a school that is used as a polling station will close and sometimes it won't. Um, the gym is the gym, it's.
It's not used every day.
It's, um, not used every other day. We have a, a candidate who is, who offices definitely fifty feet from, from the door of the polling station.
Perhaps that candidate, we should take that.
Let me see.
Just for her sake, I mean, for her own, not sake, you guys, separation. There we go, separation, thank you.
It does not have to be, I, I just brought it up to bring it up, it does not have to be a closure.
I'm okay with that. I just wanted to discuss.
I was just thinking over time to come in and lock and unlock and. Is it in this room or the gym?
It's in the gym.
The gym's one we use. So that is a separate.
It does, doesn't have to be, somebody pointed out to me that the state employees. State employees do use.
Seven, seven stores, but there's, that is, now they're twenty-three a year. We unfortunately don't have that kind of budget.
We don't.
All right, so I think I'm here on my desk, yeah. All right. All right, let's move on to, um, let's move on to, uh, brew fest.
Uh, brew fest. This may be for Park's word for Nathan, but I have some serious challenges that there was a donated bus by, I believe, Bob or Primrose?
Primrose volunteered to use their buses to offer parents, participants a safe ride to a.
And who authorized the use of that bus donated for an election?
No one.
For election propaganda?
No one. Um, they asked me, I was asked by them if it was okay if the teachers wore T-shirts. And I said, they can't, as long as what they're doing is within the rules of their private company, you can do that, I said, just.
Primrose shirts, I have no issues with. Why was their election propaganda allowed on a bus that was donated to a town? And people walked.
They ran the buses as a add-on to it. They ran it and then we had no control over those buses. So I didn't think, I didn't see, we didn't do anything with those buses.
Why, why wouldn't it say a contract or something, someone that's providing the service?
Did we have.
They came out the same as Nuvo and Nu, or not Nuvo, uh, Uber and saying, hey, we wanna help with the event, let people know we're offering rides and.
We wouldn't have any waiver liability and anything happened while they were driving those buses?
No. We had nothing to do with those buses.
Liability would be there. Yeah, but it's our event, it's our event, that's my concern. It was an event put on by the Town of White Stone's Parks Department and we had no liability, we had no, and we had no information about this that we requested. And then we had election information left on buses that were donating to us for that, for that use.
They were donated to the residents, not necessarily the event. They offered it as a service to residents, they were not affiliated with the event itself.
Uh, didn't we advertise that we were providing free shuttle?
Yes, yes.
We did offer free shuttle services through Ray's line, which we paid and had a contract with.
How does, how does the public determine the FIA was supposed to go and ask, well, this one was private contract, this was town?
If you were to get.
Based here, so.
If you were to get a bus and drive around and offer the exact same thing, they wouldn't be able to know you were.
The public's not gonna know that.
No, they wouldn't, but I couldn't stop you from doing the exact same thing.
How could you not? It's a town event and it's a public road. And I'm sorry.
It's a public business that offered the service. They offered the service, they were not affiliated with this, there was no money between us, there was no contract between us. They said, we're going to offer our residents because they're a local business, rights going from the event.
Did they not go down to LA Cafe at the cup?
Yes, they went to LA Cafe.
So they did more than just their residents?
No, because they have residents outside of Boone County.